Now, Mr George.
Lord, in the time available to me, what I plan to do is not to take the two respondents separately, but to deal first of all with a number of points which have arisen in the course of this morning. And then finally, I want to come back to the broad proposition which Mr Lawrence put forward at the very outset, your lordship will recall yesterday morning shortly before lunch, what he said was the underlying principle and the ten examples. I'm going to come to them at the end. And can I say also at the outset that so far as issue three, I'm not going to take up your lordship's time in reply, your lordships have got my submissions on it. I do say that there was the leaping from the fact of users not interrupting the golf, standing back from the golf, to the conclusion that that was as of right and that that was...
That's not as of right.
To the conclusion that that was not as of right by Mr Chapman and that that was a misdirection of law and failure to adequately give reasons, but I'm not going to say anything more about those matters. Now, Lord, the starting point for your lordships, and I would hope it would be the concluding point, is the words of section fifteen, the words of the statute. Your lordships have a provision, it is that which has to be applied, it is a very recent provision, and it is Parliament's best effort at producing a code in the light of your lordships' various wrestlings with the law of village greens. Miss Crell suggests that there's a danger here that a monstrous injustice might be done. Lord, in my submission, there's no risk of any monstrous injustice, but if applying the words of the statute leads to a monstrous injustice, Parliament will correct it, as my lord Hope has said, it appears that those in the department are already giving attention to these matters. In my submission, when one looks at the words of the statute, it's perfectly clear that here there were a significant number of the inhabitants, they were from a locality or a neighbourhood, they did indulge in lawful sports and pastimes, they did so for at least twenty years, and they satisfied the test of as of right as those words have been interpreted down the years. Lords, if I just turn for a moment here to the three examples put forward by Miss Crell shortly before the luncheon adjournment, the first was the instance where the landowner uses his land during the day and local inhabitants came on in the evening to walk their dogs. There are, in my submission, two clear answers to that. First of all, if they were coming on at dusk or in any sense of deliberately doing it at that time so as not to come to the intention of the landowner, then as my lord Roger mentioned, that would be V. But in any event...
Clam.
Sorry, that is...
Clam.
I'm sorry, your lord, to direct, that will be clam, it will not be an open use, it will be a secret use. An alternative approach to the matter will be to say that the use has been so intermittent because it has been interrupted by the owner's constant activities for prolonged period every day when the users have excluded themselves from the land, that one has not got the sufficient continuity of use over the twenty-year period. So far as the second example of the school playing field, again, the position will apply that the continuity of use will have been broken because during the school day, when the land is being used by the school for playing fields, the local people have kept off the land and there will not be the necessary twenty years' use. So far as the third example of the hay cropped, it will depend upon the facts of the case and the extent to which the local inhabitants' user has been interrupted or hasn't taken place for the necessary twenty-year period. If there have been long periods when they have not been on the land at all, then it may be that there is not the twenty years' use. If, on the other hand, they have continued to come on to parts of the land throughout that area and it has only been a matter of a few days, then it may be that there is the necessary continuity of use. But, Lord, that is my submissions in respect of those matters, but the basics...
Can I stop you there just to understand the continuity of use? In the past, I've understood it as referring to, for example, a situation where continuity is broken by the owner shutting the gates or whatever it is for a day or two days in the year, but you're suggesting, if you look at the school or the dog example, that it could be parts of the day would be interrupted.
If they have come in for an exclusive use of the land...
Yes.
As will be the case with the school playing field situation, and if we've no suggestion that the locals are, so to speak, still kicking footballs around the touchline and so forth, I mean, I don't think that's going to happen in these cases, then again, the continuity will have been broken. Your lordships will recall, we get back then to the Hollins and Verney type cases where there's a discussion that some uses will be intermittent, and that is distinguished from the cases where they've actually been interrupted by the owner's activities. But, of course, on the facts of our case, the inhabitants remain on the land, if you look at the land, the application site, at all times were on the land, and indeed, pretty much all times were on the fairways, except when the ball is about to be struck in a particular inhabitant's direction. Lord, the second point I wanted to make to your lordships concerns the relationship of village green rights, if I may put it that way, customary rights, to other easements and public rights of way. More, my basic proposition is that they are merely a variant of a tree of servitudes, if I may put it that way, and that the three have a great deal more in common than they have of differences. Lord, there are three possible differences, but only one of them, I think, is significant. The first is that these customary rights are vested in inhabitants. One sees straight away that that makes them different from the others, but, lords, I don't think there's any great significance because one, so far as public rights of way, they're vested in the public and exercised by the public, it's merely, it's a section of the public, and an easement, a private right of way, is vested in the owner of a particular tenement who's got and it has to be attached to it. So the rights are attached to different people, to inhabitants on the one hand, to the public in another, in the third case, private easements to the owner of a particular bit of land, perhaps shouldn't have necessarily said tenement, to a particular piece of land which has got the right over another person's land. But, lords, that's a difference, but it's a difference, I think, without any significance. The second is that they've got their own statutory code, once they've come into being, for regulating them. In particular, there's the eighteen ninety-nine Commons Act applying to village greens and giving landowners to resolve problems through the making of a scheme.
Could you remind me of how one gets to the point that that act applies to village greens? Is it a definition in the two thousand and six act?
Yes, my lord, the two lordships would come in volume four to forty-one A, which was the additional page which was put in, and then comes within fourteen A to page five, the definition section.
Yes, I think what happened was I lost forty-one A. Yes, I see, thank you.
It says, "Definition section, the expression 'common shall include town or village green.'" Look, it's terribly confusing, the nineteenth century legislation, sometimes by commons it means a common, sometimes a village green. This is one of the cases where common includes a village green. And, lords, this means...
And the owner has a right of veto, you say, but in this case, the owner is the borough council.
Here, there's no problem because the owner is the borough council.
So the borough council could make bylaws if your appeal is successful, the borough council could make bylaws, is that right?
Absolutely, and under the bylaws, they can set aside a part for the playing of golf. I mean, my lord, the important thing is to, if I translate your lordship to section two subsection four, that which deals with the matters that the person who's entitled to the ownership of the soil can object and then it can't be made, but it's only going to be the most bloody-minded owner of the village green who's not going to agree that it's perfectly sensible to have a scheme for the village green.
Could the council have made a scheme for a private golf course?
Well, so far as, I think they could make a golf, they could provide for it whereby the golf, those who are going to play golf would have to pay, whether they, my lord, we can see, we know that, well, at least I could tell your lordships that, and I have on several occasions before, that Huntercombe simply carries on with a scheme, and the scheme in that case simply gives everyone, all the inhabitants, a right of exercise, it says nothing whatever about, and the fact is that for all the years, the owner has carried on, the previous owner has carried on running his golf course, but...
It would be very different from having a golf club.
Well, my lord, it might be...
Being allowed to have a scheme which had guaranteed it the right or use of the village green for private, simply for members of the club.
Well, lord, I don't think it would be any different in this case, because, of course, here we've had a local authority golf club, we've actually had the local, as I understand it, the local authority have licensed, have licensed golf clubs, but, my lord...
So are people members of this golf club?
Well, as I understand it, you could become a member, you could become a member of this particular golf club, yes, and that's certainly so.
I don't think we're quite sure about this. I mean, you can have what is described as municipal golf courses where anybody can turn up and you don't have to be a member at all, but in this case, I'd understood until now that it was a members-only club.
Well, it was a members-only club, apart from the fact, as I say, that it didn't give them, doesn't seem to in practice, they weren't the only people who played golf, because we've seen that some inhabitants played golf by just going on and playing. But, yes, my lord Roger is entirely right, this was a members' club licensed by the local authority. What they could do under a scheme is to set aside part of the land for the playing of golf, and they could then have regulations as to who was to play golf and in what way the golf was to be played.
Of course, I could have putting greens or tennis courts, whatever it is, but they would all be for the locals, people who were using the park or whatever it would be. We have no evidence at all as to how exclusive this golf club was, how difficult it was to become a member. I think we do know that the lease was at a peppercorn rent, which suggests that the golf club took on the burden of maintaining the fairways and the greens, but it didn't, apart from that, paying much to the borough council.
All we know is that a number of the local inhabitants had at some stage been members of the golf club, we can see that, and we know that at the inquiry, the golf club didn't turn up as an objector to the matter, albeit that the golf club secretary, or your lord should bear recall, the former golf club secretary, did give evidence, the golf club itself decided, did not, mind you, it had gone out of existence by that time.
Why would it have any interest?
And, well, it hadn't gone out of existence, it had moved next door.
Exactly.
But my lord Walker is entirely right, we don't have any detailed information about the nature of that golf club. Lord, coming back to the point I was making, which is in that, in the case of village greens, there's its own statutory procedures for regulating what happens on village greens, but that's no different from the procedures, for instance, in the Highways Act, which regulate what can be done in respect of public footpaths and in what circumstances they can be closed, diverted, buildings erected in their vicinity, and, for instance, farmers allowed to plough them up and so forth. There's a vast number of provisions, and there's provisions about various criminal offences, obstructing them and so forth, and dealing with them. So the mere fact of having statutory codes dealing with the servitude is not in any sense peculiar to village green rights. The third distinction, and I think it's the only one, which is a true distinction, is that whereas in the case of public rights of way and private easements, the use you make during the prescribing twenty-year period then determines the use that can be made thereafter. So that you use land as a private right of way, it becomes a prescriptive right, and you can thereafter use it as a private right of way, you use it, the public, as a right of way, and after the twenty years, you could only use it as a public right of way, and if it was a public right of way for people on foot, you could only use it for people on foot, if you've acquired it as a right of way, a bridle way, you can only use it as a bridle way and for people on foot, if you've used, acquired, if it's been, become a public right of way by cars and things, then it can become so forth. So that the later use is determined by the former use.
This is a symmetry point.
The symmetry point, there is a difference in the case of village green rights, and this doesn't turn on the nineteen sixty-five act, it goes back to old customary law, as Lord Hoffman pointed out in Sunningwell, that the users are not limited to the particular sport that had been engaged in during the twenty-year period. As Lord Brown put it earlier this morning, they can move from association football to rugby or from rugby to, I think the example my lord gave was from cricket to rounders this morning, the particular sport can change, and plainly, if the sport changes, it will mean that the use being made is not identical to the previous user, and therefore, there is not quite the symmetry that there is in the other, in the other servitudes.
But it would be right, would it, to say that if all that had happened beforehand was simply walking dogs for purposes of recreation, then if registration takes place, you can then extend the activity from walking dogs to playing football and playing cricket and all the other things.
That is right.
So recreation, in the broad sense, embraces things that have not been attempted before and may make a very substantial difference to the user.
And, lord, that is a difference, and it's right that I should concede that difference. But, lord, in my submission, that is the only difference, and the broad principle...
I just want to be absolutely clear, I mean, is Mr Lawrence right in saying that the passages we looked at in Chichevo, Oxfordshire are indeed authoritative, saying that once you register, then the whole of the land becomes available to the commoners and may very well be in a way that then is totally inconsistent with the prior use made by the owners.
No, my lord, in my submission, that's not right, and I get to come back to that. If your lordship will be very patient, I'm going to come back to that matter, because that's the next matter, but if I could just conclude what I was saying, the broad principle, which my lord would hope talks about, the principle of civility, which I tend to think is the same as the principle of reasonableness, neighbourliness and so forth, applies equally in respect of customary rights and village green rights as it does in respect of public rights and private rights over land, and it involves not merely give and take between the users, but give and take between the user and the landowner, and in my submission, that does appear in Fitch and Fitch, but more particularly, it is the principle which is affirmed by Lord Hoffman in very clear terms in the Oxfordshire case, where he says in paragraph fifty-one in the third sentence, there has to be give and take on both sides. And, my lords, in my submission, Fitch and Fitch was all about that, the landowner had to accept that the local people had got a right of recreation on his land, the local people had to accept that the landowner had got a right to gather his crop, that required each of them respecting their two rights and not interfering the one with the other. But that broad principle, there's no reason why that didn't apply to customary rights and why it shouldn't apply in the future. And, lord, Miss Crell's answer is your lordship's question, why haven't there been any disputes on these matters, by saying, oh, well, Oxfordshire is new, but with respect, that's no answer. We've had traditional village greens for years and years and years, and we have had, and the position is that so far as those are concerned, owners have carried on, as I said to your lordship in opening, staging their own cricket matches and so forth on the green, carrying out various activities, putting their horses, putting their cattle on the land, and in the Sunningwell position, I have no reason to suppose that the owners are still not putting their horses on the land. There is no case law, which I am aware, to show that this has ever given rise to any problems, the two parties have related one to another. Nor is this altogether surprising in that in the numerous cases in the country where there are golf clubs governed by the Commons Act eighteen ninety-nine, that doesn't seem to have given rise to any litigation of which anyone is aware, I've made some inquiries, no one's aware of any cases going to court, that is of conflict between golf clubs carrying on with what appears on the face of this scheme to be an unlimited right of the local inhabitants to exercise their sports and pastimes. In practice, through give and take, the most respectable and exclusive golf clubs carry on with their playing of golf, and the local inhabitants, in practice, adjust their lawful sports and pastimes in such a way that no doubt they get the benefit of the maintenance, which the golf club does, of the land, and as I said in opening, they get the pleasure of watching the golf as well as their own lawful sports and pastimes. But my basic submission is that this principle of give and take is common to customary rights as to others, and if it was the position before the nineteen sixty-five act, no reason why it shouldn't be after the nineteen sixty-five act. Now, I must come to Lord Brown's point about Oxfordshire because it's a very important point. Lords, what is said against me is that Oxfordshire says that there are unqualified rights of the inhabitants. Lords, in my submission, the rights of the inhabitants are not unqualified rights and shouldn't be so regarded. What was determined in Oxfordshire was one, that there were rights, being the city council's contention that no rights were conferred by registration, and two, merely affirming what had been said in Sunningwell, that those rights were not confined to a particular sport and pastime which had been exercised in the prescriptive period. The court was not asked to consider, didn't need to consider, the question as to the extent to which those were unqualified rights of the inhabitants because they did not go to the particular question, but there's a particular indication, there are two particular indications, that the majority of their lordships, and I speak with trepidation because two of the majority are before me and they will know, casting their minds back, exactly what they had in mind, but there are two indications that it was not thought it was an absolute right. The first is the way the matter was expressed by Lord Hoffman in paragraph fifty-one, the first sentence, and in paragraph fifty-three, that the owner was going to retain rights and that there were circumstances, third sentence of paragraph fifty-one, where the users, who are one of the two sides, would have themselves to give. That is the first clear indication that it was not simply an unqualified right.
Sorry, fifty-one, first sentence and the third sentence.
Fifty-one, first sentence and third sentence.
Yes, very good.
And the gist of paragraph fifty-three. Lord, the second indication is that I, on behalf of Oxford City, was arguing that the code, unless it was interpreted restrictively, i.e. that it didn't convey rights, would constitute a breach of Article One of the First Protocol, and that that matter should therefore affect the way in which one looked at the proper interpretation of the nineteen sixty-five act. Now, it is quite plain that the majority of their lordships on this issue clearly sided and supported the view of Lord Hoffman that this was not a case where there was anything amounting to a deprivation, and it's fifty-nine, letter C, and Lord Roger and Lord Walker will recall that I never suggested that there was a deprivation of title, because, of course, there wasn't a deprivation of title, but what I argued was there was that second category within Article, within Article One of the First Protocol, where there is something akin to a deprivation of title, where the owner loses the use of his, or practical use of his land, although he's got a nominal title left. That view was rejected very clearly by their lordship because as soon as you get into either the deprivation of title or the cases where your next thing but to that, then normally one expects some compensation for a landowner, but that was rejected and it was held merely to be a control, as we can see at the end of paragraph fifty-nine. And, lord, in those circumstances, that again suggests that their lordships felt that an owner retains some valuable rights over his land, not just a right to sell on a bit of land, but some land which he'd got some practical use of.
There is an interesting, sorry to interrupt you, there's an interesting contrast between the word he uses in the last sentence in paragraph fifty-nine and the second sentence in paragraph fifty-one, if you can compare those. In fifty-one, he's saying the owner has the right to use it in any way which does not interfere with the recreational rights of the inhabitants, but then in fifty-nine, he says, "in a way that does not prevent its use by the inhabitants." Now, if it's prevention, then one can see that give and take can have its full force because you're allowing it to take place, but you're assuming that there's some concessions on each side to allow the activities to proceed in cooperation with each other, whereas interference would suggest that the inhabitants have a higher right. Now, I'm not sure which is, is to be taken as a gospel truth.
Well, my lord, I think where you've got a conflict in the wording, your lordships will have to construe it, and I know your lordship don't like construing a judgment as if it was statute, but I think it must be that the reading in fifty-nine must be the one which prevails, because if it was, if it was something, if the right of the owner was so limited that he couldn't interfere at all, then one would... that he couldn't interfere at all, then one would have been into the area where you'd been into the Article One First Protocol territory, whereas plainly the way in which Lord Hoffman would do is that he simply must not prevent use. Now, if this land carries on, were to carry on as a, if this land were to carry on being used for golfing, that wouldn't prevent its use by the inhabitants for recreation, after all, for the key twenty-year period, for fifty years.
May I ask the prosaic question? What would happen if the golf club organised a tournament, and the inhabitants wanted to have a football match on the same day?
My submission, the position is precisely as put by Mr Petchy in his article, they could go to the court for a Fitch and Fitch type injunction. And they would say, always traditionally, and it was recorded by Mr Chapman, that no one ever interfered with the tournaments, they may have gone across, but they never prevented the playing of strokes in the tournaments, now the inhabitants are doing this, there is plenty of land left, and plenty of scope for them to engage in their lawful sports and pastimes, we don't mind them streaming across the course immediately behind the play, but if they actually say that they're going to picnic on the green, or have a football match on the Saturday of things, that is plain cussedness, to use that phrase of the Irish judge, and that is wholly not a fair and proper use of the custom, which is to use the language of Fitch and Fitch.
But, I mean, supposing they, the other side, supposing that the people wanted to organise the football match, went first, and they went to court and say, we'd like an injunction against the golf club using the fairway on that day, and it's sheer cussiness that they won't allow us, one day in the year, to have our football match on the first fairway.
But, my lords, if it could be shown that the football match was necessarily going then, provided it was simply across the fairway, I suspect they would be entitled to a declaration that they could do that. If on the hand they were going to have their football match across the green, and plainly, by having their football match on the green entirely disrupt the green, so the green couldn't be used for the use it had already been used, then one would imagine the county court judge would say...
I mean, I don't know much about golf, but I don't think you can get to the green without going down the fairway, so I'd have thought that it would have been pretty...
Oh, don't believe that.
We're not meant to...
You could go, you could go on the... Well, what I have in mind here, if you were to try and to have your football pitch north-south across the first green here, then that would be a cussed use of the right. If on the other hand you were to put your foot, to apply, say to the golf club, you know, we want to have it there on that particular day, and if you chose the day when there was the least golf played, and there was plenty of notice and so forth, and if there was a dispute on that, it would have to be resolved. But it's no, as I say, it really isn't any different. One's never heard of a case where the owner of a village green, who uses it for his own private purposes as well, has ever actually found himself going to court by the inhabitants saying, will you keep your sheep off, because we've decided, whereas in the past we've always done, we've always done just dog walking, well, that's not a very good example with the sheep, let's say he's had horses on, and we've walked our dogs in the past, and now we're going to play in football. I mean, it might arise on the facts of Sunningwell there, you know, there could be issues, I mean, plainly, your ability to put horses on the land, and if it's being used for lawful sports and pastimes, there'll have to be some adjustment. But as far as one can see, during the twenty years before Sunningwell, grazing licences worked perfectly well with lawful sports and pastimes, and can continue in the future. At the end of the day, if it ever comes to it, it turns on the question as to whether the custom is being exercised in a reasonable manner, and that is a matter which the courts have considerable experience of dealing with.
But it is your submission that actually registration enlarges the commoner's rights to act incompatibly with the previous use of the land by the owners?
Well, no, my lords, it's not, it, my, what I say is...
Before, they wouldn't have dreamt of playing football across the fairway.
Well, my lords, previously, as Lord Hoffman pointed out in Sunningwell, under even the customary law, once you've got a custom to do one thing on the land, you could change to doing another thing on the land. So that is not anything new as a result of the nineteen sixty-five act. To that extent, the owner of a land which was subject to customary village green rights was always at risk that there was a change of the activities, and which might have affected...
Certainly, but not that, in fact, then thwarted what he, the owner, had previously been doing on the land.
Well, no, no, my lords, in my submission, I know of no case where it has thwarted, in my submission, it never would actually thwart his activity, because if it actually thwarted his activity, one would be into a situation where the right was being used in an unreasonable and cussed way, because the whole principle is that the landowner retains his rights, and they're not merely ownership, they're also his user rights.
But if he retains his user rights, I'm terribly sorry, then I can't see how they could ever start playing football across the fairway, they could never have done that in the past.
Well, my lords, what one doesn't, well, what one doesn't know...
Unless it's, whether it sucks, you can't play golf.
Well, do you say that? We know that in the past they have picnicked on the course, and we know that they've paid frisbee on the course and done all sorts of other things. I was given a hypothetical example where they want for one and a half hours, on a particular occasion, to stage a football match. In the past, they could no doubt have applied to the golf course, and they could have had discussion about it, there's simply no evidence that that happened. If, on the other hand, they were refused, or if there was a dispute, it would have to be resolved as to whether this was, on the facts of the case, an unreasonable exercise of the right of lawful sports and pastimes.
Would, supposing that the people threatened to hold this football match on the fairway, suppose it happens before the twenty years and registration, and after the twenty years of registration, and in both cases, the golf club wished to go to the court and ask for an injunction to stop it, is their position any different before, between before and after?
Yes, my lords, but, well, before, one would have thought that the golf club could readily have stopped it, because there wouldn't then have been a twenty-year use, so there wouldn't be enough to establish a custom, and they would be pure trespassers, they'd have no rights on the land. Post, your lordship is entirely right, posted, they have got rights on the land, but rights to be exercised in a civil and responsible and fair way, and one of the aspects to be taken into account, which I would expect a county court judge or a high court judge coming in to consider, well, is this something totally unlike in its consequences for the owner, anything that's happened previously? Now, in Lord Brown's example, where they played cricket previously and then rounders, one can see that there's not going to be anything of hugely different significance for the owner between those two sports, and indeed generally, rounders takes up a rather smaller area than does cricket, but not necessarily. But I can see that in the example of which Lord Hope gives of moving from the dog walking to certain other activities, they do have a much greater effect. And it is precisely that those matters, which, as far as I'm aware, are always at present resolved by civilness, both between the individual users and the users and the owners, which would have to be resolved in the future.
Is there any, I'm sorry, I was going to ask, is there any analogy from rights away? Because I think I'm right in saying that the law has, the common law has taken a fairly sharp distinction between public rights away, where the right is exercised on foot or by horseback, and rights away exercised by vehicles, and the vehicle use is regarded as an enlargement of the right of way by reference to what's happened before. And you can't do that, normally at least, without some justification of what's happened in the past. But I'm not sure anybody's ever tried to apply that to the kind of right we're talking about here, have they?
It's not as clear-cut as your lordship's example, because of course, I think everyone would accept that you can't go from footpath use to bridle path use. I mean, the person who rides their horse, or rides a bicycle, down a public footpath is committing a criminal offence, as I frequently tell those who go past my house, which there's a footpath, they mustn't cycle, that's simply not permitted. So there is, so there is a clear, a much, much clearer distinction. There, you simply may not operate the activity, you're confined to the previous activity.
And what is the principle that that's based on?
The principle on that is that you register a public footpath, or under the Act you register a public, a bridle way, when you put in your claim, you put in for whatever it is, and it gets on to, but Mr Lawrence is a great expert on this, it gets on to the register, and the register, which you can obtain, shows in different colours, the footpath from the bridle way, from the others, and if they're exceeded, there can be the necessary prosecutions or injunctions. As Lord Walker asked me a question earlier on, it is a deficiency of the Commons Register, the village green register, and for some completely unknown reason, it wasn't rectified in two thousand and six or since, in that the register, A, doesn't show what is the locality or neighbourhood who've got the rights, I mean, I'd have thought that was a pretty elementary matter, you'd want, the owner would want to know, because it affects how many people can come on it. If it's a tiny neighbourhood, he may be only faced with fifty people having rights over the land. If it's, if the area is actually the whole of the Borough Council, there may be thousands who've got rights, but you can't tell that on the register, nor is there any statement as to what activities took place by the users of the twenty-year period, or what activity took place by the landowner in the twenty-year period. It's thoroughly unsatisfactory, and it's that sort of matter which I believe, but I don't speak with any authority on this matter, but I believe those in, I was going to say Department of Communities and Open Government, it's community local governments, they've just spent a large amount of money getting rid of the D at the beginning, in CLG, or was it DEFRA? I'm sorry, I got it wrong, it's DEFRA, are now taking up these sort of practical matters, which you'd be sensible to regulate further and so forth. But, my lords, my basic submission remains that there's nothing in Oxfordshire to suggest that there is this unqualified right, and to that extent, if I could just take your lordship to...
Before you do, perhaps I could ask the question that is troubling me, would it be possible after registration, subject to the demands of civility and reasonableness, for the inhabitants to indulge in the pastimes over a more prolonged period?
Again, the answer is going to depend upon what is reasonable in all the circumstances. And if I take Oxfordshire as an example, where the owner hadn't actually ever gone on the land, as I recall it, the city council didn't leave any evidence that they'd ever gone on to the bit of land, and indeed, they had no reason to do, they were simply, they were putting it through the local plan process and affordable housing site, they had no reason to go on to it, and it was anyhow no wasted, it was all humpy-bumpy. But if the landowner's never gone on to it, then I think there's no doubt that Miss Robinson and the local people who'd established that, yes, they could increase their activity on it, and the landowner would have difficulty in resisting it, because if he went to court, he wouldn't be being disadvantaged by them carrying out their activities more extensively.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be possible to prolong the period of use, is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, therefore, they would be able to prolong the period of use. If on the other hand, it was one of these shared use cases where the owner is also making a use, then there'll be a different ingredient in the question. But that is no different from some of the disputes which arise in connection with private easements across a particular bit of land, where the owner is also making use of his land, and he decides he's going to develop his land either side of it, and this means that for a two- or three-year period, there's a building contract, and there are hundreds of trucks, and goodness knows what else going away, and he starts storing some of the materials on the private easement and so forth, and when the question comes with the user saying, look, really, this is becoming intolerable, they can't resolve it by give and take, he's got to go to court, and he's got to show that he, in effect, is really being deprived of being able to make a sensible use of his right of way, and the landowner will say, well, look, it's perfectly reasonable, it's only going to go on for a few years, and he can always get his car passed. True, he's got to slow down now, and he didn't normally slow down, while the building works on, he will have to slow down, but that's perfectly acceptable, and those sort of matters get...
What about the, can he, the inhabitants range over a greater area than previously?
No, because they will have registered a particular bit of land, they have to show on a plan a boundary, and they will only get registered the area of land which they can show that they have used. So if they register a large area, and there's a third of it they never go on, the registration authority will cut it down to the area they've gone on.
But can they increase the intensity of use?
They can increase the intensity of, they can increase the intensity of use, subject to the question as to whether that is reasonable in all the circumstances, which will depend upon what the owner has been doing, or what the owner can demonstrate to the court is reasonable. But as I say, it is governed by exactly the same principles as apply to the farmer or the landowner in the case of other...
But they couldn't say, for example, or could they say, in this kind of case, well, we think, you know, there's a lot of people in the area and so on, and we think that we should have the run of the ground for the mornings, and the golf course can have it for the afternoon.
Well, my lords, the golf course might, eventually, I think, my lords, it would be a matter of fact and degree, which the court would have to decide as to whether that was a reasonable exercise. The court might well decide that that appeared to be a very sensible way of allocating the rights and providing clarity for all, and that might be decided. But ultimately, all these questions, as I say, are decided under a principle that both sides, as Lord Hoffman said, have got to be prepared to give some of the time, and that the owner mustn't actually prevent the local inhabitants having a use of the land. But, my lords, subject to those principles, my lords, there is no problem, and that is after all what happened for twenty years, perfectly well on the land. Even when the owners didn't have rights, there seems to have been a perfectly successful golf course, no reason to suppose that there wasn't, may not be the sort of course which, as your lordships who play golf on are very familiar, to have so many locals there, but it seems to have worked.
I'm saying that if the test is what is reasonable, then the court would be invited to look to see what had happened before in the period of twenty years.
Yes, well, that plainly would be a factor, I'm not saying it'd be the only factor, a whole series of matters will come into play, but that's always so, because equally applies, when I think it was Lord Brown gave the example this morning, when one group of local inhabitants are enthusiasts for one sport, another enthusiast for the other, and they both want to stage their individual matches on a particular Saturday, the answer is you've got to have a fixtures list secretary who allocates it around. And as your lordships know, if you're going to play rugby, you've got different markings and so forth, and different sort of posts, if you're playing football, all these matters have to be resolved. The curious feature is there doesn't seem to be any history of this troubling lawyers.
It seems to take years to get registration, I mean, what, here, five years, what's the position during that period? I mean, are they, because, ex hypothecia, they'd be forbidden to go on doing what they're doing, and are they trespassers?
My lords, at the present time, the local people are still going, are still going on the land, my lords, they are still trespassing, they were trespassers, unless I'm right that they have actually acquired rights, they are trespassers, the local authority, no, my lords, at present, they're going on that because there are permissive notices up. From two thousand and three, there've been notices up telling them you're entitled to go up pending development.
If you, in a particular case, if the particular owner didn't want to oblige them in this way, and said, well, I'm terribly sorry, until registration at least, I can keep you out, is that what's the position?
Well, my lords, during the twenty-year period, there's no reason at any stage why a landowner can't stop them, that's...
No, 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 I'm talking about after the twenty years, they've applied to register, they've said, look at the past twenty years, but meantime, you've got five years to wait till you know one way.
My lords, you haven't got five years, my lords, you've put in an application, and it is normally determined within a year.
All right, but I mean, just take that year then, and assume there are no complications.
During that, during that...
And if one of the few cases doesn't come here.
During that year, it's quite clear, as a result of the Oxfordshire case, you don't get your right, you don't get your right until there's actual registration. The twenty-year period runs up to the application or an earlier date.
So on any showing, you're a trespasser, between the end of the twenty years, even if you eventually establish your right, and when there is registration.
Yes, my lord, you're right.
Thank you.
Lord, I was chastened by Miss Crell for not having dealt with a sentence in paragraph fifty-seven. I did deal with it in my case, but I think in the light of the submissions, I should just say a word about that sentence. I do find it a slightly difficult sentence of my lord, Lord Hoffman, as to precisely what he meant by it.
This is a no doubt sentence.
That is the no doubt sentence, but, my lord, it's, I can't count how many, but it's one beginning with no doubt. My lord, my submission would be that the owner's use can be relevant in some circumstances. First of all, his use may be such as to make it quite plain that any use by the local inhabitants is by virtue of an implied licence. That's when he uses it at certain times exclusively, and either locks, and for instance, locks out other people. Lincoln's in example. In that circumstance, his use can be relevant. His use may be relevant if it shows that the inhabitants are only coming in, as it were, in the late in the evening, and at times, as it were, to avoid him, and that their use was therefore clam. And it may be relevant to the question as to whether there really was a continuous use, or whether it was an intermittent use because the inhabitants either excluded themselves or were excluded for periods of time. If Lord Hoffman meant no more than that, then I wouldn't cavil with it. But, my lord, I'm not sure what he meant, and I don't presume to say so. But so I would have put it, no doubt, the use of the land by the owner may be relevant to the question whether the persons were using it for sports and pastimes as of right during the twenty-year period. Insofar as he goes further, I can't help your lordships on that particular matter. Lord, I'm running out of time. What Lord Justice Buckley said at volume three forty in that Commons case, lord, in my submission there, your lordship will remember those passages about the quality of the right and so forth, my lord, those are overtaken by the express words of section fifteen. You simply have to look at whether there is lawful sports and pastimes for the requisite period, and whether they're as of right, and you're not taken any further by those passages. Lord, so far as Mr Lawrence's appeal for your lordship to adopt a generous approach, you may remember, recall that, and not put the landowners to unnecessary problem, to unnecessary difficulties, I don't know if your lordships recall that submission, lords, it runs flatly in the face of Cumbunold and Beresford. Lord, in Cumbunold, the owner chose to leave the gates open and allow the people to pass through, even when the shopping centre wasn't operating. It was a perfectly reasonable thing to do. One might think it would have been pretty bloody-minded to have closed the gates, as they eventually did. But the fact of the matter was, that didn't help the owner, that he had behaved in a generous way, because he hadn't taken any positive action, and inaction led to acquiescence. In Beresford, I go even further. If a local inhabitant had applied to the council for a licence to use the land for games, and said, I want it for a particular period, in my submission, the local authority would have been acting Wensbury unreasonable if they'd refused the licence, because they could have made the licence for a short period, or for a period terminable on notice, and they had nothing in mind until they developed the land, and they'd actually put down themselves at their expense a playing field and benches. So how on earth could they reasonably have refused? But unfortunately for the local authority, no inhabitant made the application, and they didn't make the, take the step of granting the licence. It was held that they did nothing, and in Lord Walker's words in Beresford, and it's at five fifty-nine, paragraph seventy-nine, if you do nothing, it has those consequences. And can I just take your lordships to that passage, bundle five, tab fifty-nine, paragraph seventy-nine, first sentence, acquiescence by contrast denotes passive inactivity. That is what had happened, and in that same case, Lord Bingham, in his speech at paragraph five, had set out all the things the local authority could do to protect itself. The local authority hadn't done those things, therefore, it suffered. There is no doctrine of being, the courts being generous to landowners, that that's simply to invent a new concept which has been rejected. Lords, so far as those inhabitants, no one thought it necessary to ask the additional question as, how was they, how were they appearing to act? As Mr Pike reminds me, the sole question was that they had gone on neck V, they'd gone on neck clam, and there was no evidence of any licence. It was assumed from that, from the openness of the use, that the landowner could have taken the steps to prevent them, or to licence them, and he hadn't done, so that was enough. Lord, finally, can I come back to where Mr Lawrence began yesterday afternoon? And your lordship will recall that he put forward a submission that the underlying principle is that acquiescence should only arise in circumstances where it's reasonable for a landowner to resist. And, my lord, I have some propositions to put to your lordship about that. First of all, it is not the way in which the inspector or the registration authority approached this case. There is no evidence that they ever asked that question whether the circumstances were such, that here, it would have been unreasonable for the golf club to resist. So that's plainly not the way it was approached here. Secondly, in my submission, there is not a single decided case where the matter has been approached as if that is the correct approach. In Sunningwell, one might have thought it would have been unreasonable for the rector to prevent the local people straying from the public footpath, when their straying didn't interfere with his handful of horses on the land. Why on earth should he have taken any steps? If it was a question of reasonableness, he would surely have won. In Beresford, if the question had been, was it reasonable to resist? I've already indicated, it might well be argued, it would have been Wensbury unreasonable not to allow the people on. But it wasn't approached that way. The same goes for Cumbunold. Thirdly, it's extremely problematic if that is the test, because in every case, you've got a possibility of different views on whether it was reasonable to resist. And if I am an owner, present, and someone's gone over my land for twenty years, I simply ask myself, well, did they use force? Did they do it openly? Did they do it with my permission? Did they do it for the twenty years? I'm stuffed. It's as simple as that. It's absolutely clear. I mean, it comes for the courts. It's dead easy. There are sometimes questions as to whether there's been the necessary continuity of use, as in Mills and Silver, but it's a simple question. If the owner has to ask the question, well, it's a great shame I didn't resist, I knew about it, is the court going to hold that in the circumstances it was reasonable to resist? Or am I going to get away with showing that it was in the circumstances reasonable for me to do nothing? It's going to lead to huge subjectivity and uncertainty. Fifthly, it's to open the back door to the old discredited doctrine of tolerance, that's Beckett and Lyons and Cook and Ironside, which were disapproved in Mills and Silver, and further, that line disapproved in Beresford, where one gets the clear pronouncements that there isn't a central line of tolerance. You're either in activity, leading to acquiescence, or you're taking the necessary steps, either by stopping or by licensing the process. We get tolerance in by the back door. And lastly, it seems to be bringing in another heresy, which is that the landowner need only act when he's being positively inconvenienced. If he's not being positively inconvenienced, then it's reasonable for him to do nothing. But that is incompatible with the finding of the House of Lords unanimously in Cumbunold per Lord Johnson, and with the very clear statement in Beresford, bundle five, at paragraph, I'm sorry, tab five, at fifty-nine, and there is in that case, and I'm just looking up the reference, that there is a, a- There's Beresford.
Fifty-nine.
Yes, lord, if I just find the reference to it, the page reference which I have in mind.
Well, there is a sentence in Lord Walker's-
I think it's in, I think it's in, I think it's in Lord Walker, where Lord Walker puts precisely that same point, that you've got, that the one's got actually to do something about it. I'm quite sure there is a statement-
There is.
And being helped to paragraph seventy-eight.
Oh, is it seventy-eight? It's seventy and ninety.
Well, that's where the statement was put. Yes, it's the last sentence of seventy-eight, the need for the landowner to do something. But I've got a feeling that there's an even stronger statement, that he doesn't have to be disadvantaged. But I'll leave that to my junior junior to see if he can find the passage. But I think probably Lord Johnson in the unanimous House of Lords in Cumbunold is enough.
Yes, but it's really, can you just look at paragraph ninety to be quite sure? Because I think that is it, last two sentences.
Paragraph?
Paragraph ninety. It's true that the public's use of the land was not inimical to the county, city council's interests, but user can be of right, even though it's not adverse to the-
I had recollected as the last sentence of paragraph, your lordship's absolutely right, that's the sentence.
That's the point, I think.
Paragraph ninety, let it do.
Yes.
That's Cumbunold being reacceded.
Yes.
And that puts, it can't possibly be right. But, lord, there's an even more fundamental error, if I may respectfully say this to Mr Lawrence, in that his whole proposition is inconsistent with the whole law and principle of acquiescence. The principle acquiescence does not relate solely to circumstances where it wouldn't be reasonable to resist. And Mr Lawrence has been misled by the statement of Lord Hoffman in Sunningwell in relation to neck V, neck clam, neck precarious, that the unifying feature is that there are circumstances in which it would be unreasonable for the landowner to do anything. That isn't the test. The test is whether the landowner has the ability to stop the activity, which depends upon him having the necessary knowledge. That has always been the test, and the law presumes that a reasonable landowner, with knowledge of what's going on his land, will either stop it or licence it, and if he doesn't do that, that he's prepared to accept the consequences. That is the basic principle, that long user, in circumstances where it could have been stopped, will lead to a quieting of possession. And your lordships will find that most clearly in four authorities. In Sturgis and Bridgman, volume three thirty-seven, at page three six three and C six five, where the test is, can it be prevented? And at three six five, that on the facts, there was no power to prevent, because unless it was an actionable nuisance, there was no power to prevent it. Not dealing with reasonableness at all. Your lordship then finds it in Dalton and Angus, where in Mr Justice Frye's famous passage at page seven seven four, he says the key feature is, was there a power to stop the use? He didn't say a power which it would be reasonable to exercise, he said, was there the power to prevent it? The same comes in the speech of Lord Solborne, in the passage which starts at seven nine five, and runs on to the boffet of page seven nine six, when he talks of the power of interruption. The same, I believe, is true in the speech of the passage in Lord Blackburn, that starts at eight two one, and in the speech of Lord Watson, which is eight twenty-eight, eight thirty, and eight three one. I'm not sure whether I've got the reference at eight two right, eight two eight right, that may be still Lord Blackburn. The one dissenting view in Dalton and Angus is Lord Penzance, who accepts that he's in a minority, but at eight oh five to six, he says, it turns on, would it have been reasonable to act? But he is the dissenting view in that case. Lord, the third authority is Beresford, which we were looking at a few moments ago. And in my submission, it's Lord Walker's paragraphs seventy-seven and seventy-eight, which stress the need to do something and not to sit back in silence. That shows not questioning whether it's reasonable to act, but that if you've got the knowledge and the power and don't act, you suffer the consequences. But lastly, my lord, could I take your lordships to a case which was referred to for the first time this morning, and therefore it's particularly appropriate, which is the case of Bridle and Ruby, and we need to go, please, to volume one at tab five. And we'll go to the very passage which Mr Stuart Smith cited to your lordships, because it entirely undermines his leader's proposition. Volume one, tab five, page one seven eight, between E and G. The requirement that user be as of right means that the owner of the land of which the right is exercised is given sufficient opportunity of knowing that the claimant by his conduct is asserting the right. In other words, has the person got the power? Has he got the power and the knowledge? If having that, he doesn't act, then acquiescence comes into play. So there is no principle, such as Mr Lawrence was contending for. It would be a bastard principle if your lordships were to invent it. And great as your lordships powers are, and Mr Lawrence yesterday appealed to your lordships as the Supreme Court to rescue everyone and create good sense, it is no part of your lordship's function to rewrite the law of acquiescence, which has stood for many years and been most hopefully clarified in Cumbunold and Beresford. Lord, very last point, the ten examples. Lord, so far as examples one to three are concerned, neck V, neck clam, neck precarious, they're all cases where, if we take in, if we take neck V, you probably haven't the ability, the power, to prevent the person. If he's coming in by force, you cannot, you haven't got the, you can't be expected there to resist it. If it's clam, you haven't got the knowledge. If it's by your permission precarious, you wouldn't want to stop it because you have licensed it. So far as the fourth case, Sturgis and Bridgman is simply emphasizing that basic principle of the whole law of acquiescence, that you've got to have the ability to stop it. It's not an exception to as of right, it's inherent in the whole concept of acquiescence. His case where there are legal rights is a complete red herring with respect. His case where there are legal rights is a complete red herring with respect, as is Miss Crell's point when we looked at all those statutes this morning. Those are cases where people are acting by right, by a legal right, as I put it in my opening, and if they are exercising powers under the eighteen seventy-five act or any of these other acts, they're doing it by right and not as of right, and your lordships may find helpful, the Beresford case again, which is tab five fifty-nine, per Lord Bingham at paragraph nine, per Lord Scott at paragraph thirty, per Lord Roger at paragraph sixty-two, per Lord Walker at paragraph seventy-two. These are all examples of by right, and you never get in under section fifteen. We don't regard them as a separate category, they're not as of right, it's not as if of right, because they're by right. So far as this sixth category, field common, those are, as I've always indicated, either the estoppel or they're a form of clam, and I resist strongly the suggestion by Miss Crell that the local inhabitants here were putting up a smokescreen. They could not have been more open in what they were doing. They were recreating at will over the entire golf course. To say there was a smokescreen, it simply won't run. His seventh category was to say, by reference to Bridle and Ruby, that you can't set up a right which is greater than the right claimed, but that doesn't apply under section fifteen. The test is, were you indulging in lawful sports and pastimes? By definition, under village green rights, you may actually get a slightly different right, because if you play football, as I've said, you get a right to engage in other forms of lawful sports and pastimes, so you may actually enlarge the right in some way. But that isn't a true exception. All that Bridle and Ruby says is that you've got to exercise the right which you're claiming, and that's what we did. So Hollands and Verney, that is simply a continuity case for the reasons which I've already indicated. It is dealt with in section fifteen by the express requirement that you have engaged in, indulged in lawful sports and pastimes for the twenty years, which is what Mr Chapman found had been done. So far as the ninth category, which were a mixed bag of passages in Lang Holmes' case, you may remember the dog which strayed from the way, and Mr Lawrence threw in the sporadic cases, those all go to the cases to whether there has been a continuous indulgence or exercise of the right claimed, and plainly occasional dogs running off the way and so forth won't be, nor will a sporadic use. So one thing's absolutely clear here, is that there's a lawful sport and pastime. If the use is wholly sporadic of a piece of land, then it won't satisfy the test under section fifteen, but it's not an exception to as of right. The tenth case, he said, was the facts of our case, but in my submission, my lord, for the reasons which I've wearied your lordship with, on the facts, quite plainly, all the ingredients of section fifteen are satisfied, and so far as where we began, which is what's meant we're as of right, I've made my submissions, and in my submission, this use by the inhabitants plainly was of right, it's not affected one way or the other by the fact that they didn't interrupt the golfers, and it really is a disparate ploy of the two respondents who say, oh, well, perhaps they shouldn't be running their case down the as of right line, perhaps you look more broadly and say they weren't indulging in lawful sports and pastimes, when quite plainly they were. Your lordships may not like the result, but I'm not sure why your lordships wouldn't like it, since it seems to merely recognise what's happened for the previous twenty years, but, my lords, in any event, in my submission, that it's the inexorable consequence of the present wording of section fifteen, and that it's consistent with the cases which your lordships have looked at whereby, over and over again, long user acquiesced in leads to rights. Those are my submissions, unless I can help your lordships.
Thank you very much. Well, we're extremely grateful to council for their assistance these past three days, council who've spoken and those who've not spoken as well, for their assistance both orally and in writing. We'll take time to consider our decision.